It looks like I'm getting used, so yeah.
Hey Cliff, can you still hear it?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
All right, thanks, sir. Are you ready?
I am so ready.
Sure. So, good evening. I'm going to call in Senator and City Council meeting order for September ten, twenty twenty four. If everybody in attendance, please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Josie, will you lead?
Sure.
Thank you, Heavenly Father, for this opportunity to be of service to our citizens in this awesome city. We ask for your blessing to continue over this city. We ask for your protection, Heavenly Father, that you would guard us from any enemies that try to invade our city. Heavenly Father, we ask for discernment in making decisions for the citizens that live here. We just ask above all that your name is glorified in Jesus's name.
Amen. Hey, roll call, sir.
Cody Miles.
Here.
Darren Warren.
Here.
Josie Reed.
Sure.
Keith Higginbotham.
Here.
Justin Coward, did Justin make it on?
No, he's not on there.
Okay, and then Cliff Thompson.
Here.
And then Chief Harper's online too. All right, so first on the agenda is approval of the Senator and City Council meeting minutes from August thirteenth, twenty twenty four, and they've been in your Dropbox for a few days now, and there had been no changes. Someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes? Or adopt, yeah, approve the minutes.
What about that motion?
We got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
One favor? All right, next is acknowledgement receipt of the Senator Water and Sewer Commission meeting minutes from July sixteenth, the Planning Commission meeting minutes from August sixth and August twentieth, the Board of Zoning Adjustments from August twentieth, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board from August fifth.
I think I'll just receive.
And we have a, we have a, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? Next is the financial report, and I'm gonna bring Shannon up.
Good evening. So we are sixty seven percent through the year. Our general fund, we're sitting at sixty eight percent of revenue, sixty seven percent of expense, so we're just right there on the line. I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna be able to end the year very strong. We just have to be careful with September, December, because that's when our property tax dips a little bit lower, so we just gotta keep going the way we're going. And our ambulance revenue for this year wasn't as high as, or for this month, wasn't as high as it was last month, but that's gonna be changing with the resolution that we're gonna be hopefully passing today. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm not hearing, someone like to make a motion to approve the August financial report, General Street, and also the court report, which is in your Dropbox.
Amen.
Yeah, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Anyone oppose? All right, next is department reports, and I have most of the department heads here. Also, the reports have been in the Dropbox here for you, if anybody has any questions for the department heads. Right here, none. So next is public comment. This is, you're gonna keep time?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a chance, if you wanna come address the council, anything on tonight's agenda or anything at all, please come up to the podium, this is not a question and answer session, so you can make your comments, and then we'll go to the next person, if anybody else wants to speak. But when you do come to the podium, please, you know, name, address, phone number, credit card number, no, just kidding, just kidding. Name and address, just so he has it for his, for the record. And we'll start with Cindy.
Cindy Zoomstein, two thirty town. I wanted to express my concerns about this resolution authorizing council member to sell medical supplies to the city. I am strongly in opposition to that. Right now, the council is split, half were elected, half were selected. And it looks, it appears to me that the selected ones don't realize or aren't acknowledging the fact that they still represent the community and the residents here, not the city. And I just feel like there's a potential conflict of interest in this, and I hate that I do this, but I get nervous. I'm not a nervous type person, but speaking in public, I do get nervous. So anyhow, I feel that the public can lose confidence in council members if this was to be found out that a council member is doing business with the city. I wouldn't feel like that council member is ever gonna vote for the, for the residents or the community because they're in bed with the city, and that's not okay, in my opinion. Doing business with the city is not okay for a council member. They should all be elected officials, not selected. You know, how do you have a sense of responsibility if you haven't gone through the campaigning process, the election process, which I follow very closely? And you have a good example, first month, somebody was selected, and he's not here. It just, that bothers me to no ends, so I just would hate for the people or for the council to create an appearance in propriety here, inappropriate relationships with council. And in order to maintain the integrity of the city's government, I respectfully urge that you take steps to prevent any current council members from engaging in business transactions with the city or any future transactions with the city. Strongly up hugs.
Anyone else? Who is?
Thomas Seelox, fourteen twenty one Florentine Road. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ma'am, gentlemen of the Centerton City Council. Everything I'm about to say is within the context of the law or what is lawful. You have a problem. As of June sixteen, twenty twenty four, there are seven people on the Arkansas Sexual Offendry Registry living in Centerton. The highest level of offender of those seven, level three, quote, high, unquote, four, violation of a minor, second degree, lives at five ninety one Keller Road, Centerton, Arkansas, seven two seven one nine. Why is this a problem? You have, over the last year, made vast material improvements to the land on Seema and Norman Road and on Seba and Keller Road. Or stated another way, you have built parks that are a de facto public hazard because they draw young children who are sometimes not supervised by parents. I have witnessed this personally. Here's the bottom line. We don't live in Mayberry. This is the twenty first century, and there are a lot of bad people out there. It's time for this council to stop with the pet projects and start getting serious, quote unquote, about the issues that only city government can deal with. In other words, the city has certain authorities that individual citizens don't. You need to explore those authorities and write a report about what you're going to do to mitigate the potential for sexual offenders to get to parks or new community center or something like that. But from what I have seen, and I've gone over the website, I don't see any planning or anything for this. It is not my responsibility, it is not the police chief's responsibility. It is the council member's responsibility to figure out a plan and resource the police chief and all the other employees of this city to deal with that problem. I wanna believe in each and every city council member, but you sometimes make it hard to believe in you by the way you present yourself. Sometimes the questions that you ask, when you're asking people who are experts, show that you have not done your homework, or you're not prepared, or you really don't wanna be here. And what I am saying today is, you need to hear this message, I'm the messenger. You've done a very good job, and I appreciate your service, but the people of Centerton deserve a better job than what they're getting.
Comes, anyone else? Hey. Just. Yeah. I have to close it.
Sorry, Chris Loomoney, thirteen twenty five North Bang Street. Actually, I'm gonna come and give you a compliment. Bill sent me a copy of the Centerton budget, I, I just finished harvest season, so I haven't got much detailed knowledge on it, but it appears there's about fourteen million, five hundred thousand dollars in various city-related accounts, which means that you have saved enough to probably run this city through the financial disaster for several years. I would suggest, in the next year, you look at streets like Townview that are gonna develop a lot of traffic once, as you know, I assume that the utility are going to start working on both sides of one oh two Centerton Boulevard before the state starts lighting the roads. So well in advance of the state, the utility's gonna start slowing traffic down, and people are gonna find alternatives. Townview goes directly into what is planned to be a much larger or more broader street called Seba. And it begins at Eighth Street, basically in Bentonville. You need to take a look, I wish Wes Clipp was here because he knows what I'm talking about. Cindy has actually mentioned it to you before, there are places on Townview that need to be fixed, and they need to be fixed before the traffic starts building up, because it is going to start building up on Townview. But financials of the city are in really good shape, and I'll save the rest of the questions for another evening.
I don't know. Cliff, I mean, uh. Fine. Chris, sorry, I drew a blank on your name. Send me the, send me the concerns you have on, you know, there's some approvals need to be made, I'll pass them on to Anthony, but one thing, one thing I will say, only half of that's Centerton, the other side of the road is Bentonville. So Bentonville has, you know, on Townview, you go right around the curve. There's Bentonville down in there, it's all multi-jurisdictional. Just said it to me, we'll look at it. Anthony'd be happy to look at it. All right, thanks. All right, last call for public comments, anybody? Anybody? All right, public comment's closed. All right, so let's get into the business. Can't make sure nobody else showed up, all right. So first, before we start, but someone like to make a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty four, twenty twenty four dash twenty four, twenty five, twenty six, and resolutions twenty twenty four dash twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, by Title Holly.
Amen.
Have we got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, sir.
Cody Miles.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham.
Yes, sir.
And Cliff Thompson.
Yes.
Someone like to make a motion to suspend the rules required to read on three separate occasions, ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty four, twenty five, and twenty six. We have a motion, we have a second? Second.
Okay.
Roll call.
Cody Miles.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham.
Yes, sir.
And Cliff Thompson.
Yes.
All right, so our first ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty four. This is a rezone of the Erickson property. This is two point five six acres, located on West Centerton Boulevard, it's actually directly across from the post office in Domino's Pizza on the north side of the road. Here's a map of where it's at, and if you look at it, it's commercial all around it, they're wanting to go to highway commercial like all the surrounding property is. This was, there was a public hearing at the last planning meeting, and no one spoke in opposition to this one. So is there any, any questions? Okay, I'm not hearing any, counselor?
City of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty four dash two four, an ordinance to rezone certain lands within the Centerton city limits belonging to Robert and Loretta Erickson from agricultural, a one to highway commercial, C two.
Someone like to make a motion, ordinance twenty twenty four dash one four.
Well moved.
Have we got a motion, we have a second? We have a second? Anybody?
Second.
All right, we have a second, roll call, sir.
Cody Miles.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham.
Yes, sir.
Cliff Thompson.
Yes.
All right, these next two ordinances, at our last council meeting, so I propose that we include the council members in the hub training, you know, we're trying to get some more training for our council members and also our planning commissioner. A lot of this training used to be in person, but now it is all automated, and you have to have a whole lot of hours to do this. And the recommendation was on council and the planning commission to add an additional twenty five hours per month for each level they complete. And Councilmember Warren advised we should put it in ordinance for the council, which I did. So I also added to the same ordinance for the planning commission, because we pay them by ordinance also. So that, that's what this ordinance is. Anybody have any questions? Counselor, on twenty five, first.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty four has two five, an ordinance amending Centerton Municipal Code Section thirteen point oh four point oh five titled Compensation, fixing the salary for members of the planning commission.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty five.
Well moved.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, roll call.
Cody Miles.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham.
Yes.
And Cliff Thompson.
Yes, sir.
All right, whoops, I got ahead of myself. All right, next one is ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty six. This is the same thing, this is just adding the twenty five dollars for the city council member. None of the other compensation changed. Something like, or, anybody have any questions, sorry, I got ahead of myself. All right.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty four dash two six, an ordinance amending Centerton Municipal Code Chapter two point one, two point zero four, fixing the salary for city council.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty six.
Well moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call, sir.
Cody Miles.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham.
Yes, sir.
And Cliff Thompson.
Yes.
Okay, this next one is Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty six. This is authorizing the county to collect property tax for twenty twenty four, in the year twenty twenty five. Here's, here's a memo I got, which is in the Dropbox. None of these, none of these have changed from previous years, but the court, you know, we have to pass a resolution to authorize them to collect it, because it's collected through the county collector's office, and they disperse it to us every month. So, anybody have any questions? Hearing any?
Resolution number two thousand twenty four dash two six, a resolution authorizing the rate of property tax for the city of Centerton for the year two thousand twenty four to be collected in two thousand twenty five.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty six.
Well moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, sir.
Cody Miles.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham.
Yes, sir.
And Cliff Thompson.
Yes.
All right, so this next one is Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty seven. This is authorizing Councilmember Cliff Thompson, who is recently appointed to the council to continue to sell medical supplies to the city, so this is a little background. A couple of things, first, when Cliff joined the council, he was employed by Bounty. We've been buying medical supplies for several years now, have good service with them. But I also wanted to just point out down here about the fourth paragraph down, city code does allow an official to do this. It just says, you know, section three point oh four point oh six of the Centerton Municipal Code allows an official or employee of the city to furnish materials or services to the city if the official or employee fully discloses his interest in any contract or service agreements to the city council, and no favoritism is extended to the city official or employee. And that's, that's been in our code for, for a very long time, so. And, and we've had, we've had others who have sold things to the city in the past that work for different companies, so this is more for audit, also she would need this, you know, if, if you all okay that. Cliff does understand, you know, I've talked to him, if anything comes up where, you know, involves buying medical supplies, he would have to abstain from that. So he, he did understand that, so. Cliff, you got anything to add before I open it for any discussion?
Just for some clarification, Mayor, so my role with this is I'm basically an account manager, the, the fire department is gonna buy EMS supplies that they need. It's not an active sales position, basically, I'm supporting them with the supplies necessary to, to provide the service. It supplies that they're gonna be purchasing, whether it's from Bounty Medical or another provider. So it's, it's a, it's a necessity for the service. And in, in full transparency, you know, I'm there to service that account. No other ill intent involved with that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that clearly there at the end.
Can you repeat what you said at the end, Cliff?
I'm just saying that I'm basically there to service the account, and there's no ill intent involved with this relationship or my role with the council or, you know, my, my current career.
There's no ill intent.
Accountant, so just to make sure that I understand, Cliff, you do not have direct impact, you don't work for the city on the sales portion. You're in the background, what I would say, and you do the accounting part of it.
Uh, no. I, I, I am in the sales role, but I manage their account, I manage about sixty accounts in the state of Arkansas. So there, there is a sales component associated with that. It's more of a consultative, consultative sales approach, just to help them with the needs that they have, and make sure that they have the, you know, current equipment, and, you know, that they're getting the best value for, for what they need, so it also has a customer service component to it, and just overall account management.
Hey Cliff, this is Cody. I question, if you manage, you said upward of sixty accounts in the state, and are there, are there other people like you that manage accounts within the state, but if you're managing sixty, you swapping one doesn't seem like it would be a big deal.
I, I am the territory manager for the state of Arkansas, there are no other account managers in, inside the state of Arkansas. As, as you described, though, if this is going to be a point of contention and the council so chooses not to accept this, there are some avenues that Bounty Medical can take to still manage the account without my involvement.
Next, I guess my next question would be for Mayor Bill, is there any kind of monitoring process that would be in place to ensure that all of a sudden our services don't double or triple with using this company?
Yeah, I mean, Matt oversees it, the fire chief, but we also see, you know, we, we get bills, they're just restocking the ambulances, we don't get like huge bills, we just, like every month, it's like twelve, thirteen hundred dollar quarter bandages and stuff they use every day on the ambulance. We don't, we don't have like a, a big impact, like a million dollars where the
Okay, so it's minimal, okay.
The budget says it's seventy five thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's for three ambulances, yes.
Seventy five thousand a year for three ambulances?
Yeah, for three ambulances. Yeah, they, they nonstop, and fire, and fire trucks, fire trucks have medical supplies on too. Matt, did you want to say something, or no?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And like I said, Matt, I mean, but Cliff has, has been doing this prior to coming here. We've not seen any spikes, I mean, I, I sign all the bills.
I mean, if we did ask for the budget to go to two hundred K, we might throw a red flag up.
I think, I think it would be interesting, interested to see the option that you do have, Cliff, if this is something that someone else could manage, I think that, I would like to see that.
I, I talked to Cliff before we voted and and I asked him, and he said that he first talked to his boss and see if there would be any, anything on his end of the, of it, and his boss says, as long as you do your job, you're, you're in the right. So I, I mean, Matt, I talked to Matt also, and Matt said that we've been buying from this company for quite a while, right?
And we're owed a lot more in the past two years, since we went in ambulances and not just fire trucks.
So I guess we're in the discussion phase now?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, you know, I've known Cliff and known members of his family for a long time, so when I look at their character, I don't think they do anything wrong, yet at the same time, council members control the purses, we approved the budget. I know that you know, Matt's gonna be bringing the budget to us, not Cliff, but at the same time, that's a difficult frog hair to slice when you're approving a budget that directly impacts the company that you work for, that, I guess that's all I've got to say.
And in that case, you abstain.
No.
That's what the, that's what the abstain is for in a vote, is so that you don't directly conflict.
And if you're approving him to work, we, we gotta, you know, I'm not saying Cliff would do this, but to me, I, I could see a difference, somebody in the street department doesn't have direct impact on the budget, if they were, you know, selling something to the fire department, there's, they don't have a direct, say, typically, when I've looked at the stuff with others places, that if the person doesn't have a direct impact on the decision-making, unfortunately, a council member is gonna have a direct impact on the budget of stuff being sold to the city. So, I mean, yeah, we would see if there's a, you know, triple increase from seventy five thousand to, we'd see that. We'd hope that'd raise a flag and people wouldn't say anything. And I, I don't think Cliff would do that, you know, based on how I, you know, knowing him from the past. Yeah, I just don't, I just don't think it's a good idea for a council member to be doing business, because we control the purse strings, we make a decision on the budget, and we, all of us have to be constantly diligent, diligent on what's approved.
And I think it's the business, you're not specifically talking about the business, not that we stopped doing business with them, because we've done business for a
I don't think
It's just staying, yeah, I, I still think that, you know, keep the business relationship, if that's the right thing, if that's what we decided to go for.
It has nothing to do with doing business with this company, it's about council member that has control over the budget, approving that budget, which you know, impacts that company. Or any company, it doesn't have to be this company, or any company.
You have anything to add, or? Okay. Sure. What's yours, Plater?
So mine would be, I don't know if we wanna table this, and maybe Cliff come back with options of his company, if maybe, like Cody said, you know, if you're managing sixty accounts, is there an opportunity that maybe you could swap an account out? I get it, it's a territorial thing, but I just still think that there's just, we just need to see a possible option.
Is that, is that a motion? Table?
Sure.
Yeah, if I have to vote today, and it's nothing against you, Cliff, I would vote no. I wouldn't be for it, I don't think a city council member should be in a position of controlling their direct day job that does pay their bills.
Is that on the table, or?
I'm second to table, yes.
Do we have a motion and a second?
I have one question. What do you mean do over the next month until it's coming back?
What are you going to do over the next month until this comes back? I guess we sit and don't.
Cliff, are you able to get someone else to handle this until this gets resolved?
Um, I will see what I can do to find a solution for that. What the solution will be is the account will either be moved um, to a remote sales account manager with no personal interaction or um, it could be potentially assigned to an account manager in the state of Oklahoma. Um, but that would be up to the discretion of, of Bounty Medical to decide where that, where your account would fall, um, if it's moved from me.
Can, if, if you know something before the next council meeting, let me know. So I don't, and then we can, I can let, we don't need to bring it back. If you've worked that, then there's no purpose for the resolution. If you've worked it out, you know, is able to switch it or whatever. We just want to make, Keith's got a good point. We just want to make sure we get some medical supplies if we need them.
That interrupted. Absolutely not.
We don't, we don't want to.
Daily business in the city.
You, you will still have medical supplies. I promise you that. And I will try to get a, um, an answer back to you, Mayor, within the next probably forty-eight hours.
Oh, no, we're fine. All right.
That'd be great.
So, so there is a motion to table it. What, does anybody have any more questions before I? Okay, if we have a motion, we have a second to table it. Put in real call.
Cody Miles?
Yes.
Aaron Warren?
Yes.
Jesse Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higginbottom?
Yes.
I'm assuming Cliff Thompson will abstain from this vote.
Okay. All right, we're done with that one. Oh, we're still up here with, with, so this next resolution is res. This is resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight. Uh, this has allowed us to go into an agreement with Credit Bureau Services uh, for collections for the Centerton Fire Department for our ambulances. Uh, right now, we have a, a service that bills the folks. They don't have a collection services about there and I think Shannon was at it, so.
I don't have anything to add. You actually did really well at that. We just, um, we don't have a collection agency right now that's going after our open AR. So they, uh, A and B only bills up to four times and then it either sits and has nothing happen or goes into a collection agency. And then they bill it, I think, up to four to five times before it rolls into actual collections. And with the amount of open AR, it's definitely needed, so.
That'll help us collect some of the out, because we probably have several outstanding balances out there.
We do. It's about three hundred thousand.
So we got three hundred thousand. So have we looked into this company? It's not one of those crazy collection companies. It's going to be calling people up, costing them out, calling them at work.
No, and A and B, this is the one that they use the most and other cities have used this as well. And I haven't read anything bad about it, so.
And they're getting thirty percent of the recovery?
They do, and they do it in a, in a, do you want to explain that part?
So for right now, we had to change some verbiage on some paperwork they sign in the back of the ambulance. So basically, anybody that's had a bill from, well, the verbiage has been changed sometimes this past week. Um, when Brian got it approved. But so before we get, for the stuff, the previous two years, we're going to get seventy dollars out of every hundred they collect. They keep the thirty. And then when the verbiage change, every hundred that they collect, it actually costs the patient another thirty. The patient has to pay the thirty.
That's good. Okay.
Okay. So we had to do some verbiage deals to get everything done, but it is done now.
We just need to change all the stuff that's been back billed.
If it's over a hundred, we're getting a hundred percent. Well, not a hundred, but yeah, I see what you're saying. We're at least recovering.
We get seventy percent of every hundred and once with the new verbiage, we'll get a hundred percent of it. It's just going to cost the patient another thirty.
And since I, you know, so they can pay the bill on time versus turning into collection and getting billed the extra thirty dollars.
And then if it goes to legal filing, it says it goes to forty percent. How will that work in recovery? Will it, same method kind of play out there?
That's what they told us. Where we'd only get sixty of a hundred and the future will have, it would cost them forty.
I understand three hundred thousand dollars a lot to the city. It's not that I'm against getting the money collected. Still think about grandma on her fixed income that's getting ready to give.
With that.
By collection.
With that, when we do learn about hardships, that's something that they said will be at the discretion of myself and Matt. Not sending them to collections.
Because we've already got some of that discretion built in with the actual ambulance billing. What we did, you know, we, with the ambulance billing company, we use some of the verbiages from the hospital on how they go through those processes and if they get discounts. And so anything a hospital gives the discounts on because they have the specialized people, that's the same discounts that we give.
So, you know, for low income folks, because I just hate the idea.
They qualify.
People while they're down.
If, if they qualify it for, um, the hospitals, they qualify it for.
What is our average revolving milestone that we're going after in collections?
Which are we at? How much is out there?
How much does, on average, how much is sitting there are we trying to collect?
Right now, we're trying to collect up three hundred, over three hundred thousand dollars. Plans are unpaid.
Okay. So just this alone could pay for the system potentially. And that's a one-time fee or is it three hundred an annual?
Well, that's what we've built up in the past two years because we haven't had a collection agency. So actually, once it'll somewhat start dwindling down.
Okay.
Our, our open AR will never, if we have a collection agency, it will never reach what it is now.
Got it. Okay. No.
That's a big disaster. All right. Any more questions? Councilor?
City of Centerton. Resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash two eight. A resolution authorized the mayor to the clerk to execute on behalf of the city in a group of credit bureau systems incorporated, Duka, Kentucky, to, uh, collection services for the city of Centerton, Arkansas.
I'm going to like make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty. We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Cody Miles?
Yes.
Aaron Warren?
I am voting yes, but hopefully we, uh, we're not beating people that are already down and understand three hundred thousand's a lot.
Jesse Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higginbottom?
Yes, sure.
Cliff Thompson?
Yes.
All right, this last resolution is resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine. And I'm gonna let Lorraine come up and talk a little bit about a, a grant that, uh, the city is applying for, uh, through Northwest Arkansas ULI. She'll give you some exciting news that we're actually finalists for this, but let, let her tell you. And then also, just so you know, I did put in the drop box, you know, this talks about the grant that we applied for. I hope y'all had a chance to look at it.
Lorraine, I was really excited to see this come in after reading through our comprehensive plan and, you know, the goals of the city. Seeing this come into play, in my opinion, is a big step forward.
Well, I was really excited when we got the email and they had, um, mentioned that they had this grant out there. And it's for cities that are less than thirty thousand population. If you go through Cape Springs, I mean, Cape, yes, Cape Springs, they're downtown. You can, they were, ULI, they, they were given a grant from ULI Northwest Arkansas for a downtown plan. And so that's what they've been working on. In their old community building and so forth. And, uh, I know that New Ridge, I was, you know, they were doing all these things on the trails and they were talking about it, you know, how much ULI had helped them with, um, the planning nodes and connecting. And so when they specifically sent us an email and said, hey, you guys need, you know, we'd like to, you know, to apply for this. Because during some of the meetings, we had like a community of practice um, that they put together that brought all the cities together. And what it, and what it is, is working with the cities on how can we help you develop the places that people want to live? Whether it's transportation, uh, design, you know, designing those communities, uh, the trails, connecting. You know, with, whether it's just with the inner city or with other cities. So one of the things is that we just had the, the smaller cities have the difficulty of having the monetary means to hire a consultant. So this, this grant could be upwards, you know, up to two hundred thousand dollars. So, and basically what we thought was a priority is providing the citizens with a sense of place. Providing that downtown. Everyone talks about, we really don't have a downtown. We do what we can with our current downtown. And we're going to be presenting that. We're, with the presentation will be tomorrow. We only have fifteen minutes. We're kind of like, wow, we could talk longer. So we're, you have to keep condensing. So, uh, basically, it's going to be the downtown, how we would, how we're using it, how we're using it now. How, you know, what we see as far as like especially Main Street and making it a boulevard and parking. So that it will attract businesses. The new downtown and all the area that, you know, is left to develop besides all that is being developed. And then how those two can connect. So that's the purpose, what we applied for, for the purpose of the grant and it'd be for consulting and helping us with this plan.
Any questions? I'm hearing any. Oh, do you have any? I'm sorry. You haven't read that?
Just gone.
Okay, sorry. Uh, councilor?
Resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash two nine, a resolution expressing, expressing the willingness of the city of Centerton to utilize ULI NWA's small cities initiative grant funds.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine. One or two, so.
I'll let Keith on it. I'll suck.
Give it to him on seniority.
I said you were excited. Boy, that was quick. All right, we got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Cody Miles?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Jesse Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higginbottom?
Yes, sir.
Cliff Thompson?
Yes.
Next, I want to bring Cheryl up. She's going to give us an update on, uh, our bonds and a timeline to execute that. She's also got some handouts for you. Uh, but I also have it on the screen so the public can see what we're all looking at. Wait, this thing, I think what's up there. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. That's what you gave me. But I want the public to see what, what we're talking about too as well. I'm just going to switch the screens as you go through it. Make sure it's still working. I had a problem downloading. Anyway, go ahead.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and council members. So just to give you an update, since it's been a little bit since I've been before you to discuss the bond issue. Um, first off, you can see on page two, we have your historical sales and use tax receipts going back to twenty seventeen. Uh, this past twelve months was about almost an eleven percent increase over the last twelve months. Um, and you can see that it was just shy of three point two million dollars. Um, if you go the next page, just to recap, back on March fifth, twenty twenty-four, the citizens of Centerton voted to extend the sales tax and then voted to pledge that to the financing of the following items. The construction of the community center. Streets improvements. And I'm just summarizing here, obviously, and parks erect and then the police department facility. In addition, what's not on here is there was about three and a half million dollars that we had set aside to refund your outstanding twenty seventeen and twenty-one bond. And that is no longer needed. There was enough surplus tax receipts and funds that were held in reserve for those bonds when they pay off that we will actually, um, the city will be able to instruct the trustee to call those bonds and fully redeem them on November first, twenty twenty-four. So. The next slide shows the tentative calendar, which, um, we are on schedule as of right now. The documents have been submitted to the rating agency and bond insurers to receive quotes on those. Um, then we will come back, uh, offer the bonds on October eighth. I will have a conversation with, um, Shannon and the mayor and anyone else that would like to be involved in that. Part of the city to discuss the pre-offering, basically update the city on what the rates are. And it's similar to what I'm doing now, but with more current dates when we get there, or more current rates when we get there. Um, we'll sell the bonds on October eighth and then come to the council to adopt a bond ordinance and execute a bond purchase agreement. Then those, you have to publish the bond ordinance after the fact and that has to have, there's a thirty day period. And then we will close then November fourteenth. Any questions about anything so far?
One thing, Cheryl. How? You said that, uh, as of November, we're going to be paying off the other bonds that we had. How much time did we have left on those bonds?
Um, they were going to, because of the surplus revenues, they would have paid off regardless November first. Why we don't have to use any.
How long?
Originally?
How early are we? It's been, it's probably more than ten years. It's about ten.
Something, uh, around ten years. I can definitely get that for you. I'd.
I just, I just wanted, I just wanted that in the minutes that it is a long.
Yes.
Period that we are paid off.
Yeah, I think, well, I better not say anything because I might be wrong. I don't want. Uh, but I'll certainly get that to the mayor and he can disperse it to each of you. Yes, it paid off much earlier. Um, we build these in with a, a mandatory redemption feature. And because of your sales tax collections, um, you're able to play, hit those down quicker. And we will do the same thing with the series twenty twenty-four bonds as well. So if you go to the next slide. This is a preliminary. So on the slide where we discussed how much was approved. If you take out the refunding portion that I don't, did not show here, you have about forty-three point three million that you're authorized to spend based on what the, the voters, um, approved. And then if you go on this, uh, page five, you can see that the total power amount, the principal is forty-three, one thirty-five. So, and this is ba, basically what we did was we solved based on thirty years at current rates as of September fourth. The maximum amount the city could borrow. So, uh, it doesn't necessarily mean that we will, uh, issue bonds for that amount. Mayor is going to work with the city, uh, department heads and get back to me on exactly how much that number will be and for which, uh, how to allocate that amongst those projects that I just mentioned. Um, but as you can see, that will give you, uh, thirty-one point two seven six million dollars in actual construction funds. And you can see what that looks like in total debt service per year. And that's assuming a one point two five coverage. So it, it means that you're collecting more than what this is showing in order to pay those off early and provide a cushion should your sales taxes decrease for some reason. Any questions about that? Just really summarized. We're assuming an A plus. We will give a presentation. The mayor, Shannon, and my team will give a presentation to standard emforcers to receive a rating on these bonds and, uh, that is next Monday. And Todd will be joining us as well. Yeah, we're assuming an A plus rating, but we'll need to push for maybe, uh, an upgrade on that. So we'll see. Um, and then the next slide is just describe where we are with the economy right now. As y'all know, we have an election coming up. Um, so getting out ahead of that is, uh, ideal and beneficial, I believe, to the city. Um, there's still some conflicting data, uh, for the Fed to consider. But there, they, all the economists are expecting there to be rate decreases this year. And they have, uh, priced into the market about a hundred basis points, which is one percent of a decrease in the rates for the rest of the year. Uh, so it'll, we'll see what happens. They meet next Wednesday. And we will know, uh, if they're going to lower rates. Um, because they've already factored some of that into the market rates. It, it may or may not change what you're looking at today. We'll see. It depends on a, a lot of the, uh, conversation, the number, the inflation numbers, employment numbers, all the data. So. Um, the next, any question about that so far? Um, the next slide, and I'll just run through, just make the information for you that I, I'm not really going to talk too much about, but, um, the Raymond James forecast. Uh, the Raymond James forecast is slightly more conservative than what most economists are suggesting, and so you can see there what. What our economists are predicting for third quarter um and in of this year and going forward. And of course, the inflation numbers. And unemployment rates. The next slide shows. The triple A MMD, which is a tax exempt benchmark that we use. And you can see over the last two years, I think I've shown you this slide before, but this is the last two years. Um, how volatile it has been, we were almost at zero percent rates and uh. For the one-year MMD, and now we're at like two point two five percent. In just two years. Um, the next graph. Help me if anyone have any questions, but the next graph on page nine, I like to show this because. This graph goes back to nineteen ninety three, so thirty years, which is a long time, however, it does show the red line is where we are today. And the dark blue horizontal line is the average of all of those rates for each of these maturities, one to thirty years. From going back to thirty years, and so you could see the first three years, we're just slightly above. The average, everything else is below, so it's not as terrible of a time to be investor, borrowing money as it may seem, so. Uh, not quite where we were a year ago, which was at the very bottom of that graph, but um still not, not uh terrible, so. Any questions? That concludes my presentation.
Any questions for Cheryl? We don't need to take no action tonight, right?
Actually, just wanted to come before you before we just suddenly come to you and say we sold bonds, so.
And that's next council meeting.
Yeah. And then this presentation, I know you got it here, but I want it on the screen, cause Cliff's not here, but also anybody's not here, this is in the Dropbox. I'm gonna get to the Dropbox.
Sure, if you want me to leave this with you.
You can probably leave, yeah, you can leave them, just leave them with Shannon or something.
Oh, yeah.
Give them to Shannon, that's fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is uh adding a uh assistant, assistant to the fire marshal. So I've I've talked to Matt a couple times here recently, and workload there with the number of new businesses and. Uh, the fire inspections, because all our businesses every year has to have a fire inspection. Uh, they start. So anyway, it's it's picking up, so uh. Matt has come to me and asked if we could go ahead and hire an assistant, so uh this is the proposal for tonight. Uh, he would like to hire someone at a rate of twenty nine eighty per hour, which is based on a forty hour a week. And uh he he can fit it in his budget, there's no problem, looking at his budget, it's fine. So anybody have any questions? Uh, so I'd like to make a motion to hire the assistant fire marshal at a rate of twenty nine eighty per hour.
That motion?
A motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Anyone opposed?
And when will that take effect?
Uh, today, well, as soon as he, as soon as he makes the changes, it's effective today. It'll be soon.
It will be soon, uh, it'll take a couple weeks, because he's good. The one that's getting promoted is off ship, so there'll be some transition in there.
And you did say you're bringing somebody from in-house.
Yes.
Good. All right, next, Nancy's still here, so uh he's coming to me with some equipment, he wanted the surplus. I have all these pictures in the Dropbox, if you all want to see them. Some old stuff, we have a twenty sixteen trend tandem back axle trailer. Uh, ten-foot heavy-duty uh plow, stainless steel spreader box, caterpillar wheeled excavator. And nineteen ninety one international tanker. And uh approved, all this equipment will go on Gov deals. We usually do pretty good surplus in the equipment through Gov deals, uh we've we've done very well, so uh anybody have any questions?
Are we replacing it with new equipment, or where are we? Just throwing it into the budget? Oh, the man with the plan.
He's replaced some of this already, so.
With all this being put out for sale, are we replacing, are we?
Most of the stuff that is here, we've already replaced.
Okay.
The water tanker was bought used, it had a hole in it when we bought it. It it's more trouble than what it's worth, it's still got a good engine and a good, you know, body to it, it's just the tank itself, it's just not worth the effort. Um, we bought a tr- a water trailer to use instead. To water trees and other stuff, but we can, it's a multi-use trailer.
So it's more or less just gonna be revenue then for the department?
Yeah, there's no, this is stuff we just had laying around, we needed out of the yard, we need more room, we did, y'all just approved the new wheeled excavator to replace that one. Also bought used, and we're spending more uh money on maintenance and fixing that one than what it's worth.
Any more questions? I would like to make motion to uh surplus this equipment. Motion and a second, all in favor? So this other other business got a couple things, uh impact fee memo, I did email this to everybody. Uh, Anthony uh. Got with them, so hopefully we'll have something very soon, they coming next month, you think?
Uh, completed by the end of September.
Okay.
Both are probably together for council next, next council meeting.
And I emailed this to you, I think, last week, so, but I put it in the Dropbox, we had it. Uh, also, you know, we didn't talk, I talked last month about the. Northwest Arkansas Regional Transportation Study, the the STIP for projects. Uh, you know, and I did present the letter. I'm gonna get two seventy nine, also one oh two B on there. Right now, in this draft, the only thing listed is this highway out here. The other ones are not listed, so I'm not sure if this is the draft, this is not the final, I just wanted to kind of show you what's there, and I left it in the Dropbox, you all wanna look at it. And then also the Chamber of Commerce, uh.
Is that an aerial view of the new greenhouse road?
That's it, that's Greenhouse Road. This is, this is act, no, this is actually, oh.
That's a street.
This is actually Main Street. See, Chris's house used to be over there, but we got a sidewalk running through it now, you know, it used to be a house there, now it's a sidewalk, so. All all those trees that used to be grapevines. And then and then also, uh, here's a chamber update, uh, which uh Jesse has provided to me. And and also, they did have an event, I'm gonna send to all of you, any electric officials wanna go, they're having a uh greet, or like a morning coffee business deal. On the first Thursday, and all of you are welcome, I'll send you an invitation next time, just so if you wanna drop in, I think the next one will be at the chamber office up here.
Yeah, Elite Realty.
Uh, up here at Elite Realty, so uh, does anybody else have any other business? Council, any other business?
Saturday morning.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm going, I'm going there.
Everybody come and eat breakfast.
Come to the firehouse, eat breakfast, we have a lot of events, I think I posted like five hundred times now, people probably shaking their heads, Bill, stop it. But I wanna make sure we're getting the word out, there's a whole day of events uh happening for Center today. Everybody's been working real hard, getting, you know, all our departments, everything, getting together, get this thing going, this is our annual event. And uh, a lot of fun, we did add a five K run this year, uh or added it back, we've had one in the past, and now it's back and look like.
Sam did a great job calling out, hit up the pancake breakfast of the five K runners.
Yeah, we we told her to put that into stuff, you know, because they're gonna be hungry when they're done, come on and.
Right.
Eat pancakes. Also, I think I spoke. I'm not sure if I spoke about the NWA preparedness fair coming, uh that'll be here the following Saturday. Uh, this is big for Centerton, because you know, this is bringing a lot of folks here from all over the state, a lot of this, this, the theme this year, I mean, we just all had a tornado here, so. Uh, you know, there's some good information as far as preparing for emergencies in the future. Uh, with that being said, uh, we're not gonna have coffee with the mayor next, next Saturday, Tuesday to third Saturday, but I cancel it, you know, so. I'm over there, give them everything they need, you know, make sure they they got all the resources, we we wanna make this big, so uh, this is exciting for the community.
You've ever been. You know how big it is, because that is, was a. Big following, there's, there's people that come from everywhere.
Wow.
I'm actually a little intimidated.
Yeah, are you the parking director?
I am, I am this Saturday, I'm the parking director.
He's gonna help me in the center, anybody wants to volunteer, come see me afterwards, I'll, Cheryl, you gonna come help us out? Come on back to look at Centerton, all right, so that, so make a motion to adjourn.
Done.
On a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you all.